This has been the most professional department I've ever seen in my career. So, thank you. So with that being said, uh, behind me, uh, our Captain Greg Steer, he is the Patrol Division Commander, Lieutenant, I'm sorry, Captain Aaron Friedline, who is in charge of Investigations, and then Captain Brad Jaeger, who's in charge of Administration. So there, um, we all, we're a team. And even though I were the Moniker of Director, we make our decisions together. And so if you have any questions, anything, don't be surprised if one of us says something, the other one cuts us off and we go there. But the most important thing is, we want to get you the information. If we don't have it, we'll get back to you. So would that be, oh, sorry, yes.
You know, you introduced all of them, but who's that?
I was just about to introduce, this is Ashley Tokoi. She is our new Public Information Officer, and she is gonna be the one guiding me to make sure I don't screw up this bad. So without further ado, Ashley, if I may ask, so the mission and the value statement of the Riley County Police Department is to reduce crime and improve the quality of life for the citizens we serve. That is, uh, in a nutshell, I think, what this department holds prime and true. With that, the core values are what we consider important. Uh, I'll read it out in case some, uh, folks aren't, are having a hard time seeing it. Uh, the, the values that RCPD considers important determine the way its members view their role and the people they serve. Values serve as a link between what every member does and the community's participation and understanding of the department's mission. The Riley County Police Department's values are reflected in the way its members serve and interact with the community. These are not just words. Anyone ever see A Few Good Men a few years back? And, and Jack Nicholson goes off on that tangent on the stand, and he talks about, we use words like honor, loyalty, things to that effect. A lot of law enforcement agencies will have the same set of core values because it's a check-in-the-box, because, well, we're supposed to be servant to the people. We're supposed to be, you know, have integrity and honor. But this department really, really means it. And culture is one thing that is extraordinarily hard to change, especially in law enforcement, the culture of any organization. It takes a long time to get culture to a, to a point that the right thing to do is the norm and not the exception. And within the Riley County Police Department, if you are the exception, it's not Brian Pete or Captain Steer that push you out. It's the officers on the street that do that. That will be quick to tell you, we don't treat people like that here. And that is something that's, it's hard to find this day and age, especially in the profession of law enforcement. So the eight core values that the department, uh, prides itself on are integrity, loyalty, teamwork and cooperation, initiative, empathy, reliability, judgment and professionalism. One of the ways that we stand true to this is each year, we have annual reports, performance reports, and all officers, professional staff, corrections officers, administration, these are specific categories that supervisors grade us, uh, grade you. And so, so again, it's not malarkey, it's not the lull in. It's what we hold ourselves to on an annual basis. The overview of the department really quick is, it's a consolidated agency, meaning that I serve as both the Sheriff and the Chief of Police. There are a lot of good things that come out of consolidation. I think none negative in my experiences. Um, it saves money. Ultimately, it saves money. It helps in communication with, within the department and with our communities. We don't have the Sheriff and the Chief, you know, I'm a Steelers fan and she's a Raiders fan, and the next thing you know, we've thrown a few cracks at each other, and I don't want you going out on the Sheriff's calls. I don't want you going out on the officer's calls. That happens a lot in law enforcement. One of the benefits is, is we don't do that here because we're all the same. Um, we're a lot of two-hundred-twenty-three positions that consists of a hundred-tenths warrant, fifty-one corrections officers, twenty-four dispatchers and thirty-eight professional staff. Uh, and again, we're broken into Patrol, Investigations, Corrections, Administrations and Support Divisions. So here are just some basic statistics. Um, these are, the numbers are fairly reliable. Uh, some of the cases haven't been fully resolved, but this will give you all an idea of what, uh, crime looks like within the, uh, within the county. So Part One Violent Crimes, Part One Violent Crimes is just the FBI's way of saying, if you think of the more vicious crimes, uh, robbery, rape, murder, attempted murder, those different types of things, those are considered Part One crimes. Each one is broken up into month, and on the bottom line, you'll see, we look at everything. This is a, a data-led department. Uh, it's based on intelligence, it's based on analytics, and that helps us with this, with our staffing as well. I'll talk a little bit more about that. Um, but the five-year minimum, so within five years, if we take the data from five years, that's the lowest that the department has been. The five-year max is the red line, and where, and the five-year average is the green line in the middle. So for Part One Violent Crimes, that's where we've been at. The highest that we've seen in October is twenty-four. With all due respect to crime, crime is a personal thing. If you've ever had your car stolen, if you've ever had someone break you to half, if you've ever got into a fight, um, if you've ever been around when someone shot at someone else, that's very personal, okay? And, and there's a perception element to that. But the data part of it is, we enjoy, compared to a huge, to, to huge municipalities across our country, we enjoy a very low crime rate. Especially for the amount of people we have within our county. Especially for what we have here in our county. Um, again, that's not to say that, hey, we're, crime's low, everything's fine. We don't want to listen to hear anything that you have to say. We need your input to make sure that we keep these numbers at the same number, at the same level, or lower. Um, but again, this is not just attributed to the hard work of the men and women of this department. This is because of the community as well. I think that we have a very strong relationship built on trust with this community. Um, and that also this community wants to maintain its standard of living, wants to maintain what it holds itself to. And with that partnership, we're always gonna see numbers like this as long as we keep cooperating with each other and moving forward. So after Part One Violent Crimes, breaking that down, looking at robberies, the highest there, November, is three. Aggravated assaults and batteries, the highest number's here, sixteen, and that's in October. Part One Property Crimes, the highest numbers here are, I think it's one-oh-eight, and that happened back in March. And again, these are, you're seeing towards the end of the year where we're trading at. We are either below or a little bit above the minimum for the majority, the vast majority of the categories we're talking about. Structural burglaries, the highest level we're looking at is fourteen. And I wanna, wanna say this, I've said it a hundred times before, and I always say it in front of the captains, uh, in, in our staff meetings. If, and I'm from Chicago, so, um, so I really, really mean this. If I was gonna commit a crime, I'd do it in Chicago because I'm not gonna get caught. The community doesn't care, the cops are too overworked. Um, but if I do it here, somebody in the community saw me, somebody in the community knows I did it. Nine times out of ten, the cops are so dedicated, they know anything that's going on, they probably have an idea that I did it. And then when you add them both together, something happens, I reach out to Captain Friedline or to Captain Steer and say, hey, I heard about this. Oh yeah, we know about it, we just haven't released it yet. You'll hear something more about it. Sure enough, a week later, there you go. The shooting that happened, uh, there were four offenders, uh, that came into our town, not from our area, we're seeing a lot of that. Captain Steer will probably touch on that at one point in time in the conversation. But a few days later, if not a day or two, three of them were incarcerated, people who shot at other folks. The fourth one reached out to federal partners, and it was one of those things that I had reached, that I just, and passed me in the, in the hallway, is, hey, uh, Captain Friedline, what, oh, you'll hear something about that in a little bit. Next thing you know, oh, the US Marshals caught him in Chicago. And that happened to be the weekend I was going back to Chicago for, uh, for, uh, for Christmas break. And the first day there, I actually got to go back into the jail and work with one of the investigators, one of our detectives, and, and talking to this young man and getting him ready to come back here to answer for what he did. So again, I'm extraordinarily proud of the men and women in this department because no feat is too small. I'll give another example. I was out, uh, for the, for the first, uh, New Year's, and there was a couple. They were in, uh, in one of the, uh, the eating establishments. And, and a fight broke out. And nothing to do with them, they just happened to be at the wrong place at the wrong time. These individuals turned on her for no reason. He came up to help his wife, they attacked them. We ended up coming out to the call, we didn't find any victims at the time. They left. Then, uh, when the offenders left, about an hour later, right before closing, myself and Lieutenant Ordnick were getting ready to leave out, and a lady and her husband, the, the people who were attacked, came in and they said, hey, this is what happened to us. And we're like, oh, you were the one. I can tell you, the places I've been to, we're like, oh crap, that sucks to be you. Fill out a report and we'll talk to you about that later. Uh, Lieutenant Ordnick did not delegate this down to anyone else. He took the report, she thought that there's nothing that's gonna happen, you guys let him go. He actually went out, got camera footage, talked to other people, identified the car and the offenders for, for a battery. So I've heard, the lieutenant did that. Not delegating it off to somebody else because he cares. He honestly cares about this community. So it just gives me goosebumps to work with the men and women in this department all the time. It's a joy coming into work. Uh, so for, from structural burglaries, we'll move to vehicle burglaries. Uh, the highest that we've had was forty in February, and this is again, one of those things that train, you'll see how it works, especially coming up towards Christmas time. Motor vehicle thefts, those are down as well. And DUIs is something that we all struggle with. We all wanna make sure our roads are safe because we're leaving today. All of us expect to be at home. All of our loved ones at home expect to see us there. We wanna make sure the roads stay safe for folks. Traffic accidents? And then from traffic accidents, preventable traffic accidents, and these are those things that we say like, don't drive distracted, uh, don't play with your phone or with, with, with the radio. Um, so we keep track of all these different things, and we look at the numbers as a team. We sit down together and figure out, how can we make the numbers even lower? So what we have here is statistics, it's a heat map. So from these maps, we're gonna break it down into each individual municipality, the larger municipalities within the county. The heat maps simply tell you that, um, the majority of the calls for service or the incidents or reports of crime are more consolidated in certain areas. So you'll see here, and for our county, countywide, the majority of where we're spending our resources in law enforcement happen to be in Manhattan, which makes sense because it's the highest concentration of people. So for the Manhattan Heat Map, we're looking at these areas. Again, the darker the color, or the brighter the color, is the, the more condensate of calls for service. Now I want to stress, I can make statistics look like anything. Um, but the thing is, is this is just where it's at. And this is where we're spending the majority of our time and our resources at. Unfortunately, we're, we're hovering around the, uh, the area right off campus from K-State. Uh, and then three other areas. Again, this isn't to say that, oh crap, if I live over here, I'm in a bad community. No, I mean, there are reports that are everywhere, but the highest concentrations are the ones that are put on the heat map. For Riley County, for Riley, this city of Riley, or the town of Riley, these are the areas we're looking at. And again, keeping in mind, you see colors, that's not to say, oh my God, wow, it's a bad community. That's simply to say that if there's twenty calls for service, well, there you go. So again, don't be fooled necessarily by the numbers. If anyone has any questions, we'll talk about those, or you can ask those questions. Looking at Ogden, these are the, uh, the heat map areas here. And for Leonerville, we've got four red dots. Moving on from that, Keats, we've got one up there, not even coming back, I think. So what I had mentioned is a crime reduc-, what I want to talk to you all about is a crime reduction plan. In your hands, you should have a copy of a multi-year plan. This is nothing more than a strategic plan. And strategic plans are living, breathing documents. We want, again, make sure that we share our information with the communities that we serve. Um, maximum information, minimal delay. In those multi-year plans, based on statistics, based on our internal conversations, based on previous multi-year plans, we've developed goals. And I have a set of goals, and what I do is ask the captains, how can you all, what can you do in your individual divisions to help us accomplish these goals? So from those goals, you're gonna see what I've got, and then the captains are going to go back, work with their sections, and then figure out what they can do and what they can implement to make those things happen. In the back of that multi-year plan, these are goals that I have, they're personal to me. These are things that I don't believe that I should just simply say, go off and do this, and it's incumbent upon you to have something done. There are things that I have to do too. Okay, and not above anything else. So with this multi-year plan, we want to do also what's called a crime reduction plan. There's a lot of fancy words in law enforcement. We're trying to get more professional, we're trying to get more academic, and this is the next phase of it. But again, Riley County Police Department has been doing these things since before they became fashionable buzzwords within the profession. So a crime reduction plan is reaching out to the community and finding out what it is that you didn't want to see us do. The department has already done that, we've done that through the multi-year plan, but now I'm gonna switch it up into a different format. It's just gonna be more of a summarization. So after our discussion tonight, I'll have a discussion with folks in, uh, in Ogden. We're working on putting out a survey, but I think that they've had some internet issues or some, uh, email issues within K-State. And then getting that feedback, and then checking with our multi-year plan, and then figuring out how we're going to work through it. So the purpose of a crime reduction plan is to outline efforts to reduce violent crime and its negative impact within our county. It's a problem-solving approach in four categories. Prevention, proactivity, response, accountability. Thing with crime, I'll tell you a little secret, you can't get rid of crime. It'll always be domestic violence, unfortunately, DUIs, all those different things. Law enforcement is traditionally a reactive agency, it's a reactive profession. We don't go out there until we know something's happening, until someone's called us for help. But there are things that we can do to be more proactive to reduce crime within our community. Does two things, makes Manhattan a happy place, man happiness, and it also helps us grow so that fiscally we're responsible. If we have a safe community, business owners are gonna wanna invest. Jobs are gonna be better, things are gonna be good, we're gonna grow. And that's what we want to do, is we wanna make sure that our community is suitable for growth and is attractive for growth as well. So, um, but as I mentioned about crime, you'll never get rid of it, the only thing we can do is really reduce it. And in, in reality, the only thing I can say to you is, if I make crime unattractive here, or we make crime unattractive here in Riley County, the knuckleheads are just gonna wanna move someplace else that they can get away with something, or they believe they can get away with something. That's unfortunate, but that's the reality of what we're at. So anybody here from Junction City? Okay, alright, good, 'cause I was gonna apologize to you because I'm gonna tell you that you don't put up with it here, so you're either gonna have to do your top four in Junction City or someplace else. There is a reputation here that you don't do that crime. And we're, we're, we're proud and proud of you. So prevention is achieved through outreach and partnerships. Proactivity is intelligence-based and maximized personnel. Uh, I'll talk about personnel. So for, as I mentioned before, we're a data-driven, uh, department. Does anyone have any idea what the average officer to one-thousand citizens ratio is in the US? Those who have already seen this presentation, please don't answer. Okay, so, ah, so, so nationwide, uh, the, when they're fully staffed, law enforcement agencies have, on an average, two-point-four officers per one-thousand residents. In Kansas, in the Midwest area for the allotment, it's higher. It's anywhere between two-point-six and some estimates, two-point-eight officers per one-thousand residents. Does anybody have an idea on how many officers per res-, per one-thousand residents are here in Riley County? If I wanna guess? Two? Close, one-point-five. We are keeping this community safe, we're doing it well, and we're getting along with our community with one-point-five officers per one-thousand residents. If we go up to the average, we're looking at adding seventeen to twenty-two more officers. That's significant amount of money to be asking for you all for taxes. So the way we do it is through competency, good training, a very good culture, and partnerships with our community. That doesn't necessarily mean, though, that the officers aren't getting burned out, which is my theory. My number-one priority is to make sure every officer, every corrections officer, every person in the administrative staff goes home at night. Nor do I wanna be the reason that someone's family is on the, the cusp of breaking apart because the stress is, is bad. The, the job is inherently dangerous, there's a lot of psychological issues that go on with this. It is incumbent upon us to making sure that our officers, our staff, our corrections officers are resilient because they give it their all every day. So that's what we're out here to do. Um, so with all that being said, when you, you look at that multi-year plan, you'll see one of those elements is that we, we have to look at where our staffing levels are at. And again, every year, we're doing more, just like everybody else, with less. But we're using data to figure out where to put people at in the right places. I have a little unofficial, this isn't verified, uh, study that I've done internally in my own head is 'cause every time something happens, I, you know, we talk about it at staff meetings, something happens, I'm like, yes, they heard the gunshots, yeah, they heard the fight. Like, well, hold on a second. Which tells us that when we figure out, when we know the time, the location, the dates, everything else, and then what little staff that we have, we, we, we build it so that staff is at the right place, is the majority of staff at the right time. And that tells me that if officers are there when there's a shooting, officers are there when there's a fight, we're doing our job right. We're using data to take what we have and put it where we need it to be. Unfortunately, like even just last, this weekend, this past weekend, two of our officers were attacked there. And when that happens and an officer's pulled out of rotation, everybody else has to step up in overtime and all those other different things. So just like any other profession out there, we don't claim to say, we are, I never liked that term, um, essential personnel, because I think we quickly all found out that every job is essential. But again, it's my responsibility to make sure I can give them and their families everything they need to do. So those are some of the things that we talk about or that we're looking at doing as we move forward down the line. Peale and principles, so back in the, uh, early eighteen hundreds, Sir Robert Peale, I believe is his first name, talked about what law enforcement's supposed to look like. The police are of the community, the community is the police. It's a fancy way of saying, you never abuse the power that you have been trusted with. You treat everybody fair, with dignity, with respect, and you'll get a community like Riley County. And it was true in the eighteen hundreds, and it's still true today. Um, so the goal is, again, to prevent crime. I, because that's really the only thing that you can have an effect on. Give you an example, someone gets arrested for, uh, narcotics use. They go into, uh, into our corrections facility, it's just narcotics use. I don't know any, well, I'll just put it this way, personal story. There's several people within my own family that have struggled with it or are struggling with it. Several of them are no longer here. And that's not a fault of theirs, okay? We understand that in the Riley County Police Department. So if you have someone, if we know that someone has an addiction issue, we don't want to see a repeat customer. If they're in our custody, we wanna see how we can work with faith-based organizations, social service agencies, uh, like Captain French is down there right now. He's several people that he know they don't even have a driver's license, don't even have a social security number. So why not reach out to other organizations and try to find out? You know, it's not a hug-a-thug philosophy, these are human beings, okay? And that's how we have to see it. And anyone who's been in, well, you all are all alive, so you probably know crime is cyclical, it's generational in a lot of cases in law enforcement. That, um, when I first started off in the city of Chicago, working at, it's unfortunate because I was an armed police officer working at an elementary school. And I would see the kids who weren't killed on the street, seeing them at my daughter's age. And then five years later, well, after I arrested their parents, five years later, now I'm arresting them. And that just continues on. A lot of us who have been here for a while, you've seen, I arrested their grandfather, now I arrested their kids, now I arrested their kids. How do we stop that chain from occurring? Young kids didn't ask to be born into a situation that that's all they see and they know. How can we break that cycle? So law enforcement, there's a term out there, you're warriors, sheepdogs. We're not sheepdogs because these are fellow human beings, these are fellow Americans. We're guardians, and we hold people accountable to the law. But at the same time, we do what we can to make a difference in their life that has a compounding effect. So that's not lost on us. So now, what I need to hear is from you. What is it that you want to see from the Riley County Police Department? What concerns do you all have? And no concern is ridiculous, it's just ridiculous people that have, and I was scared. Uh, nothing's ridiculous, we want to hear, we are here for you. We serve you, not the other way around. So does anyone have any questions, comments, complaints, concerns? Yes?
So, uh, you mentioned how data-centric this approach has been, and that's great. Guy who is working in education on, you know, data analytics. Um, how transparent is your data? And how willing are you to share with the community so that they can ensure that, you know, the stats you're using are appropriate and valid or comparable to another data center?
Okay, very good question. I'll start off there, but I'm pretty sure, um, our folks are probably gonna add a few other things 'cause, um, they've been here longer than I have. Uh, but I'll, I'll start off by saying that I have never been a part of a department that's more transparent than this one. Um, the data is there. One thing I don't think that we do is like an annual report. So at the end of the year, we put out statistics, we give summarizations of what happened. You see that, like, in, in most municipalities. I think the city of Manhattan does an annual report, tells you about public, you know, works, what the budget was. Though, that number, though, that data, it's out there. Um, it's out there, it's directly available. Uh, we also have meetings with the law board. So I am, I'm the, the director, but I answer to seven members of the law board. So I put that information out there.
Question, as the director, you couldn't tell me you worked in Manhattan?
I can tell you- I can tell you, I can point to right over here, I can tell you, but the majority of that stuff's on our website. But as a director, specifically the day-to-day operations of those different types of things, not necessarily what I, are the numbers that I have right off the bat, but I can tell you where that data's at, and if you don't have it, I can get it.
And I'm sorry, I don't need to give you-
No, no, it's, it's, it's understandable, there are certain standards you wanna hold me to.
But as you can imagine, like, Key State is right here, Emporia, Washburn, all these agencies, so we get data requests into our records division, so we have a records management supervisor that does take in all kinds of inquiries from, you name it. I mean, whether it's big companies or a lot of the research institutions, the, the graduate program students or whatever asking for data. So if you have, like, if you're trying, I don't know, if you were doing some kind of traffic analysis and you wanted to know how many citations were issued for X or something like that, or how many warnings were given, like, we can provide you that data. And I will tell you, on the annual reporting, like, you know, he was able to give you these twenty-three, twenty-two-three statistics. As we kinda continue to finish those reports out, the Kansas Bureau of Investigations, later in the year, it's usually around August, kinda finalizes those twenty-two-three numbers for agencies around the state. And that's when those numbers kinda, all the step, crime stats get certified. So that, that's unfortunately kinda has a leg, but it's a little better than the federal government on that regard too. But, yeah, you can always ask, pick up the phone, submit, um, inquiries via email, and then you can, we have LexisNexis as our data analytics and a platform that our crime analysts use as well.
That was gonna be my follow-up question, is how are you, uh, formulating these, uh, conclusions? Or, uh, so you've got, you know, a period post, you know, how are you going about that? Like, how open are you about that?
Well, like, you know, when he told you, showed you the heat map, so we kind of employ something called like hotspot policing, where you get all your data grid points from around, like Manhattan's the best example of that, throughout your outliers of the smaller communities. And you can kinda see whatever, what were your calls for service, what your, what were your crimes reported? You kinda aggregate that information, and that kinda paints us a picture. And you know, you can layer in then, what's that environment, like a SEPTED approach? And then you can add in, what are the crime, are there people with no warrants in that area? And you can kinda see, like, people tend to be geographical when they wanna commit crimes. So that, all that information can kinda help us identify, hey, during these times of the day, we have a lot of calls for service here, or, or crashes here. And that's how we try and get our officers to go to those locations and reduce or prevent crime.
And, and then, and if I could, if I could piggyback on that, there, there's so much data that's out there, it depends on what is what you want that we can produce for you. So when I first got here, I did a little mini audit, if you will, and asked questions like, uh, okay, how many arrests have we been making? Um, what were the age groups of the folks that were arrested, what was the race? Um, which officers pulled over people of color or issued more than warnings, or all those other different things? So through that, through the, that data analytics, so when you're writing someone a ticket, or when there's a call for service, when there's a arrest report, we capture that data. Male black, this age, male white, female this, and then it's all that number's put into there. So when you get in those certain factors of what you want, it'll spit out what it is this day.
So there's no concern about how that is computed?
No. I don't know if that makes sense if I'm answering that correctly.
To me, yeah, it makes sense.
Cause, cause it's, it's only based on, like, it's, well, you know, garbage in, garbage out. And one of the, one of the, uh, so when, when arrest reports come in, actually, I'll, I'll ask Captain Stair. So when I come in, I make an arrest or I do a case report, how does that case go through before it's accepted within the system?
Yeah, I, are you, are you kinda referring to how we compare to, like, other agencies, ourselves, whether we're doing well, et cetera? Cause we use, you know, uniform crime reporting and such with throughout the state of Kansas, which allows us to, uh, compare statistics and, and, and be, uh, you know, submitting, uh, the same, the same things and stuff. So it allows other, you know, us to compare communities and that. And so, um, Aaron's staff does a really good job of, of showing how we're doing compared to other cities and, and the average in the state and stuff. And those numbers take a little while to come out, but that's a big part of what we're doing is, you know, we're not making up the categories that we're tracking, we're using, you know, the things that, that other agencies do as well. So that's, that's how we kinda keep the integrity of the data, and we're not just, you know, picking and choosing what we wanna do. But when we go, go and do an arrest, obviously, you know, patrol officers take reports and such, and then we, uh, submit an electronic, uh, report, an arrest report, and then we pull case numbers and, and, and file an offense report, and those get sent to our records management system that Aaron spoke about. Sometimes they get sent over to Aaron's division for further follow-up of investigation, you know, on the, on the case and stuff. And then we submit, you know, these reports to our county attorney's office, we have a great working relationship with them to ultimately, you know, prosecute our cases and that. So does that, does that help?
Yeah, no, it, it, it does a lot, and, gosh, I feel like I'm stealing a whole bunch of other-
It's okay.
No, we wanna make sure we-
Yeah, I, I, please, I'm gonna shut up.
No, we wanna make sure we earn your trust and that we-
Yeah, uh, you know, I mean, uh, there's more I'd like to learn about, but I think there's maybe a-
Yeah, definitely.
That just slows down.
At any given given time, here's my card.
I have my machine, yeah, it's okay.
Yeah, and just, please don't be crying, okay? You just drop me an email and then let us know, if, if you wanna come in one day for a few hours, I'll show you everything. Um, like, even though I couldn't, I was recording, there's certainly some federal traffic I wanted to report on.
So it's more of a therapy, but I think I would wanna not too-
Okay.
He says you could be up for a couple of hours.
All right.
Anyhow, if you have a problem, so.
Yes.
Um, so in situations of trying to prevent crime, a lot of the bigger cities usually have problems with overpolicing, how are you keeping that in check?
Uh, so-
What's the question?
Uh, bigger cities have problems with overpolicing, how do we keep that in check? Um, so what, what I say with data, uh, data-led policing is, is again, we have to, we only have a minimum amount of officers to respond to calls for service. And it's intelligence-based, so if we know that historically, uh, on Fridays at six o'clock, we always get X amount of calls about complaints of speeding, like stop signs, um, fights, or anything else to that effect, then we know, we can build our schedule around, well, how many officers normally will it take to deal with a domestic violence call, or this, or to that, and then we'll adjust our schedule accordingly. So, and then, again, like the traffic, it's more than saying, ah, well, you know, every time I drive into work, there's some, somebody who always runs a stop sign, so as soon as I drive over, I'm gonna sit over there with a stop sign, I'm gonna catch him and teach him a lesson. Well, we don't do that, cause it's data-led, so the, so the captains, which are the tenants, which are the sergeants, and then it's, the sergeants will say, I need you here, you're supposed to be in this area, you're supposed to be in this area. Rather than, so, so that's the data part of it. It's not gone all those days, at least in this community, that we say, but you know what? There's always something going on over here because I can feel it. We don't do that, we say, the data says something's going to happen, or this is where majority of our cops are, so we need to have a presence there. And the other part of that was, like, say, for example, for traffic. If you get pulled over for a traffic violation, unless it's something that we have to do the citation for, normally we'll say, this is why we're here, because we can see a rash, crash, traffic crashes, or there's a community concern, this is why we're here, um, everything seems to be in order, please drive safely, thank you very much, I'm out.
Well, thank you, you know, you talk about overpolicing, and, and we definitely data, you know, drive to where we deploy our resources, but, um, one of the things about that is, you know, there's been a lot of research out there that you can actually have a great effect, even just being somewhere for a short amount of time and stuff. So we, you know, with our laser points that we do, uh, they, they happen throughout the day, and we'll, and the concept is having someone, uh, being there even for a short amount of time can have a lasting effect in that area and stuff. And so the officers, you know, we have a culture, a lot of, you know, moving around to different places and stuff based on the data, and just trying to be as impactful as we can every day. Does that make sense?
And, and if I can add one more thing to that one, uh, when I, I came out of the Inspector General's office in the city of Chicago, and the city of Chicago never consented. And all the things that we're talking about, what the research says, that you should be doing this, you should be doing that. And then when I came here to Riley County, I'm like, oh, they're already doing it. Well, not only that, we've been doing it since two thousand fifteen. Okay, what else can I bring to this department? Because you all have everything sewn up. Only thing I can do is bring teamwork and how do I support? Because academically, administratively, ethically, co-motively, this department is solid. How do I try to figure out how to take a team that's fifteen and one, and one year sixteen and oh, another year, to be sixteen and oh every year? And that's my challenge, but I rely on them because they know the most. So I don't know if that answered your question?
It did, video.
Are there any other questions, anything that you all want to see from your department, any concerns that you have? Yes?
Uh, from a prevention standpoint, uh, you know, I know we've had these conversations that, uh, in some of the areas, you know, even that, you know, the heat map will show you, we don't hardly have any cameras. And I know that's, uh, uh, that's kind of moving up the priority list, is that right?
Yes, so the question was, in some of the areas, especially with heat maps, we don't have any cameras. And, and what is, how is that as a priority for the department? One of the things that's been tasked to us by the law board is, again, we're looking at taxes. It's cheaper for us to buy a camera system that we don't have to pay for, um, benefits and retirement, um, than it is to say, well, we're gonna add several other different officers specifically for that. So we are looking into, um, license plate readers. We've purchased them, Captain Freeline will probably be able to talk a little bit more about that. And then other areas, we're looking for cameras that will help us to try to deter crime. Now, we're not talking like cameras with artificial intelligence that, well, that don't know the difference between this person or that person. Anything that we use, we feel tested, to make sure it's gonna meet the high standards that we have for ourselves, and the, the high standards the public is gonna have for us. But with that being said, I'll turn it over to Captain Freeline.
Yeah, so we are gonna deploy license plate reader cameras around the exterior, interior routes into the city. We purchased eleven cameras, and one of them is set to be placed in Aggieville too. Um, like you mentioned, we do have people that like to visit, especially that part of our community. Sometimes they're involved with crime and use obviously a vehicle to leave that area, so that was another place to be a capture point of some data. Now, like, license plate reader cameras, those are not a live feed, I mean, they truly are a camera taking a snapshot in time. And then also on, um, other camera systems that we would wanna employ, those would be more of a, a live feed, but we don't have the staffing to wanna hire somebody to sit and watch a cam, I mean, you demonstrated, we have crime, but it's, it's low. So, but the ability to maybe go back through and, and say, uh, whatever the crime information was, if we were looking for someone that, um, was wearing a ball cap, and maybe they got into a red Honda Civic, like, the ability to pare down four hours worth of video from six different cameras to, to look for that specific information, where the detective then could go back through that kind of footage, that's the kind of intelligence assistance that, that we would try and optimize instead of trying to watch four hours on six different cameras. Could be, I mean, we kinda do it now, it's, it's my, it's mind-numbing a little bit. So I, I do think cameras will help leverage, cause I know, Captain Stair and I would love to tell the chief, will you please hire about twelve more cops? You know, he would probably take eight on patrol, I would take four, that's not realistic. So how can we use some technology to advance our resources and try and optimize the time that we do have with the officers we do have?
I assume you're focused for, kind of, for community policing and crime protection. I know you've stated before that it's kind of a personal mission that you wanna include community in what you guys do. Does this pillar entail, like, having close relationships with the community services?
Yes, so the question was on pillar four, um, it talks about community policing. And, and, and how, pretty much, how are we making that happen, how, what are we involved? Uh, I, so, so foremost, um, almost, well, a significant amount of staff are involved in a lot of community activities within where they live at. Uh, whether it's faith-based, whether it's, uh, on, on a board of B A B, whether it's on the Rotary Club, whether it's, they're all involved. Again, so you can never forget where you came from. One of the biggest things, dangers of this profession is you tend to wall yourself off from everyone, and you dehumanize everybody else. Nobody's like me, nobody's been going through, and you start to think that everybody in the world is bad, and you're only dealing with two percent of the population. And you start thinking, everybody's like that, so it's important that you remember, ninety-eight percent of the people in the world are like that. Um, so we push that. Uh, one of the other things that I have is there's a community advisory board, and that's made up of individuals within the community. Maybe even people who don't necessarily think like that, maybe people who are more, um, uh, critical of the department, they wanna make sure that we're exercising the powers that have been given to us in a very, very responsible way. That's who I want on my team, current advisory board, is to make sure that we can see the forest from the trees. So that community advisory board, when you roll out new policies, when we talk about new strategies, when we talk about license plate readers, those different types of things, we'll run it by them, and they'll say, uh, it's bullshit, we shouldn't do it, or it's a good idea, or we have a discussion, a disagreement, and we talk amongst each other, and we figure it out, we each understand where we're going to next. And you figure out how to be solidified. Then the other part about that is my law board. I have to get, I can say, oh, this is what I'm gonna do, this, that, this, that. That's great and handy, Brian, but as soon as I go to the law board, they say, you know what, Brian, all that hard work should come to us first. No, that's not what our community wants. So there is a civil oversight for that. Um, we're also working on a fair and impartial policing group, that's, that's some of the leaders of our community advisory board that are a part of that. So we're looking at, uh, again, it's part of those whole statistics that went in. How many people of color have been getting pulled over? Um, how many people have been issuing warnings? Uh, all those different types of statistics, we're looking at that data on the cost of bases in that fair and impartial policing group. I can stand up here talking to the face and say, oh, there's nothing here, nothing to see here. But if I have a fair and impartial policing group that's gonna ask the same questions, that's gonna have access to that data, they're gonna say, okay, explain this, okay, I see. Now we got, cause again, we believe that you're here to serve the community, not, not to keep it constrained. I don't know if that answered yours, okay?
Have you thought of enlarging the building? Do you have enough room in that building?
Very good question.
I thought that would be a good question.
So the question was, have we thought about enlarging the building? So the, the, the funny thing about is, uh, with this consolidation with how things are set up, the city of Manhattan pays for eighty percent of the department's budget. Riley County pays twenty percent of the department's budget, but they also take care of all the facility needs that we have. So there is a, there's a, sometimes there's a political battle of wills, if you will. Um, but yes, we have outgrown the current facility that we're in. Um, one of the things that I'm looking at doing right now was, we're doing a feasibility study, uh, and, and seeing how can we add more space to where we're at, cause it's gonna be significantly more expensive if we find different land and say, this is what we wanna do, okay, that's great and handy, two thousand dollars per square foot, and how many square, how much square foot do you need? So, I don't ever wanna come to my law board with a problem and not have a solution to it. My goal is to figure out before my contract expires, uh, which is another four years, is to have either approval, or the building being built or done, or upraised for the facility. And I plan to do that through, um, grants and allotments and things like that. And so there's a political chess game that I have to play, and that way that the money that we've already spent to the federal government is reinvested within our community.
Have you said anything to the law board about maybe considering adding on or building a bigger building or anything? Or they don't know that yet?
No, they're, they're aware.
Yeah.
They are aware, and, uh, and, and they're, the law board has been very, very supportive. Um, we're all tempered with the reality, and, and especially with this year. One of the things that we, that we, that we're staying extraordinarily cognizant of is with how law enforcement, every profession has been going on in the world right now, we're throwing money at it as a society. Oh, I need a, I need another person to do this job, raise it up two dollars an hour. Well, that's not sustainable anymore. Every year, you have law enforcement agencies trying to buy out other officers to come work there. Uh, so what we have control here is our law board has helped us in getting up to sal- recommended salary surveys and cost of living adjustments. But the one thing we can control is that we have an environment that people want to work in. And, uh, so if you're from another agency, and you know your community's not supporting you, and you know that you have an authoritative, uh, supervisory chain, hey, come on over to Riley County Police. hey, come on over to Riley County Police. I I heard Riley County Police people are happy there. So that's how we control those numbers. But the law board is very supportive of us, and unfortunately, it's one of those things that's like, when do you ask for a bond to come out? And then how welcome is that going to be from the community? So we wanna exhaust outside opportunities before I go to the county and say, uh, there's nothing else I can do. But once we get the feasibility study that comes back, um it'll tell us how much more money we'll need. And at that point, I'll know how much I need to go out there and beg for. Are there any other questions, thoughts, complaints, anything that you want to see from your department? Now's the time. It's your community. We're here for you. You go out, and we want you to feel safe no matter where you are in the county.
Well, you know mine. I don't, you know mine. I I communicate without.
Mm-hmm. She has my personal email address. Every once in a while, we get emails coming back and forth.
So I'm not shocked.
I know. And I, and that's what I love about it.
But uh I think you said something about generation of crime, where the good, you know, you arrest the parent, then you arrest the kid, and then you arrest, you know, and it just goes on and on and on. Well, I'm from New York, and you know, the powerfully category for the kids. And I know y'all stressed out. I know y'all, you know, you're you're understaffed and all of that. But uh I also know that there's some people that would love to spend some time with kids, because you have to get them when they're young. You can't wait until they're in junior high school, and nowadays, they're getting going to some places, you know. And I was thinking maybe, you know, because you, Manhattan, I mean, you have a lot of retirees, a lot of uh people who, well, I can't speak for everybody, but I only speak for me, that would love to volunteer and spend a couple of hours with kids, whether it's, you know, teaching them a trade, teaching them this, teaching them that, the time that they can speak. But it has, you know, it has to be a place where they can do this. And in order to stop the generation of crime, why go up in the sixties? So things have changed, dressed, dressed for us, people raising their kids, and with the governments that you can and can't do. You know, and I think that has a lot to do with the increase in crime too. Because today, the kids have no discipline. They're running the household. They're running their parents. So if you have an outside other than their household where they feel that they can talk, or, you know, it's not judgmental with their parents, because a lot of times kids would talk to strangers before they would talk to their parents or relatives and stuff like that. That's just an idea. I know y'all are, y'all are stressed out and all of that. I told you about the cameras. I told you about the lights, man, it's dark as I don't know what. But my thing was to put lights on the electric poles in the backyard, you know, where that way, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, it's a deterrent.
Yeah, it's a deterrent. And uh, well, well, we had lights everywhere, you know. And so that was the one thing. And uh the license plate readers, you know, and uh, because you you had said something about grant. He was gonna get the lights and stuff like that. He was gonna apply for, and one of our emails took.
Yeah, that that grant, we didn't, we didn't get that grant because we didn't have the level of crime that Alton, East St. Louis, and other places, they gave that money to high crime areas and not to.
High crime areas, okay. So you say population-wise, are you adding in for thriving and all of that? It can't just be Manhattan, because for Riley, half of them live in Manhattan. So you have to consider that population too. And I know, you know, that Manhattan crime is lower than other cities, other states. But for the population, and from when I moved here to now, I see an increase. You know what I'm saying? I moved here, people were leaving with the doors open, and then the car doors open. And I'm like, what the hell? You know, and now, you know, you got five locks on your door, security system, this, that, and the other. So the thing of it is, is you have to be able to scare some folks. Manhattan is a great place to live, don't it, if you're home? Like, I think that I'm a, I'm a preventative person. I'm not a, I'm a proactive and a preventative person. So I'm gonna think two steps before you, and that's what you have to do. You have to think, why the grimness? Because they're not, they don't sleep. You know, they're constantly thinking of ways to do things. And so you can employ not so much expensive things, but like the lights on the electric poles, you know, and stuff like that. Get with the utility company, you know, and 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 see what they can do. Because they do have lights that you can put on the poles. And who pays for them? I don't know. As much electricity, it should be free. Like, uh, that's something that you can, and things like that. You know, I I got a lot of ideas, and he knows about them, because I, he knows them too.
We, and I appreciate it. Those are, some of the things that you talked about with generation of crime, uh I'll mention two, two things right off the bat. Um uh we have a victim uh advocate coordinator. So the law police departments in the country do not have that. And we're fortunate enough to have uh to have Melissa here. So when when issues happen, when things happen, there's crime, there's domestic violence, there's something to that effect. She's working like crazy to utilize the resources that we have in the community to pool toward that family. And then with school resource officers, when we're noticing things that are going on in the household, if officers are dealing with something, hey, we just had a call for service, it was domestic that night, or we try, I'll get Sonia, call, say, hey, Sonia, when Billy comes into school, there may be some issues. He may be acting up, he may be sad, he may be this. So we can get together with counselors and pool those resources as best we can. The other thing that we're working on is, uh, you know, Dr. Lorenzo Lockett? He he's out of Key State, but he he just stood up a, an organization that is working with kids who are in that cyclical crime element, high-risk kids, if you will. And with that type of a partnership, that we reach out, because he's on our community advisory board as well. So that, so when we trade and share that type of information, we can be proactive in working, but that is a really good idea. How do we, how do we get people within the community under that banner, that when we identify the help that we need, we can reach out to the community so we can get that help? So thank you for that. We will take that back with us.
Don't forget the light.
Oh, yeah, you know, we're, but you know, Ron keeps emailing every once in a while too, about the lights, so. Any other questions, thoughts? What can we do for you?
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah, seven o'clock. We appreciate you all taking time out of the night to be here with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you wanna say something?
Here, ask her.
Hey, how's everybody getting along with Ned? See?